Hey, good evening, everyone. It's 6:01 PM. It's Wednesday, September 18th, and I'm calling the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. And turn it over to Board Attorney Floyd Dugas to get it started.
Okay, good evening. We are here on a language grievance filed by the union. As I've explained during prior training, there are two types of grievances. There's a grievance, appeal, and discipline. In those situations, the administration have had the burden of proof. For to prove essentially just cause for the discipline that was issued by preponderance of the evidence. That's not what we're here on. We are here on a language grievance, so that means that the union has the burden of proof. Union has the burden of production, meaning it has to go first. And your role as the board is to decide whether there has been a breach of clear and unequivocal language in the collective bargaining agreement. If you find such a breach, then you would sustain the grievance, and then the question becomes what remedy you grant? If you find that the union has not established a clear and unequivocal violation of contract language, you should deny the grievance. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Bush. I'm the staff rep with CSCA. We have two grievances this evening, just to clarify, that are both institutional. I do have packets. I was told there'd be three members here, so I did make more copies than three. How many? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Two, three, four, nine, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So that is that one. I'll hand out both packets now, so that we can just go on from one to the next. So I will start with the institutional grievance regarding Article II, the rights and responsibilities of the Board of Education and all other related articles. It's the third paragraph on the written disc.
The second packet you handed out?
It's the first packet, I believe. It should say Article II?
Yeah, so it's the packet with the third paragraph that says institutional grievance Article II.
Correct. So the grievance was filed by the union on May 24th, 2014. And in your packet, you'll see the corresponding exhibit, Union One, or the grievance documentation. The district is utilizing the statement of the details of the grievance. The district is utilizing non-bargaining unit members to do bargaining unit work. And the district has also failed to comply with the contract language as stated in Article II, Section 2.2, regarding hiring classroom assistants. So this was filed on May 24th, 2024, at the first step. Union Exhibit Number Two is the contract language for your reference. Specifically, Article II, Section 2.2 has the language in regards to how the district can utilize hiring part-time classroom assistants. And that is two pages. The union met with the district on June 10th regarding the grievance. The union shared that the district had failed to comply with the collective bargaining agreement regarding the hiring of classroom assistants. The union contends that the district was utilizing classroom assistants in a manner that violated the collective bargaining agreement. The union stated that the classroom assistants were working more hours than allowed per the collective bargaining agreement, and that the district had not provided advance notice to the union prior to hiring a classroom assistant as per the collective bargaining agreement. The union also stated that the work being performed by the classroom assistants is bargaining unit work, that the classroom assistants were doing para educator work. Classroom assistants do not have the same qualifications as required to be a para educator. The union shared that the classroom assistants are working the entire day and in the same classroom with the same students. District response was given on July 1st, 2024. That's Union Exhibit Number Three. The district contended that they had not permanently hired any classroom assistants to perform bargaining unit work, and that they used classroom assistants when personnel failed to report to work due to illness or other situations to temporarily fill in for vacant bargaining unit positions until they could permanently fill them, and that they had made effort to fill these positions, however, were reaching difficulty in doing so due to issues with availability of the Para Pro exam. Union Exhibit Number Four was obtained from the district in an information request regarding the names of employees that were hired in this classroom assistant role. And as you can see, the classroom assistant will be listed as either a kindergarten aide or a lunch slash recess aide. Union Exhibit Number Five is the district's information that the union requested in regards to the actual hours that these classroom assistants had worked in the school year for 2023, 2024.
Diana, I'm sorry, before you, some of these things have a penciled in.
Yes, I'll explain that. I'm sorry. The asterisk on each one of these sheets indicates that they had gone over the contracted allotted hours. These hours that were reported are the two-week scheduling period. So in a two-week period, if they went over the amount of hours that they were contractually allowed to do, there's an asterisk next to that line. The union contends that the district violated the collective bargaining agreement by having classroom assistants working more hours than allowed per the contract. The information provided by the district demonstrates that there were 41 employees that were hired as classroom assistants. Of these 41 classroom assistants, 27 of them exceeded the amount of hours worked per pay period that's allowable per the collective bargaining agreement on multiple occasions throughout the school year. I will further note that the majority of these classroom assistants were hired the beginning of the school year in September and worked throughout the entire length of the school year through June. The union also contends that the district failed to comply with the collective bargaining agreement regarding notification to the union prior to hiring anyone in this classification. And the union requests that the district comply with the collective bargaining agreement regarding the hiring of part-time classroom assistants. Does anyone on the panel have any questions for the union at this time?
I just have a couple clarification questions. The first is, we indicated that first basis for a violation is that the board was using non-bargaining unit people to do bargaining unit work. Other than 2.2, which you identified, is there any other provision in the contract that fits that, or are you relying on 2.2?
I'm relying on 2.2.
And if I understand your position, it is essentially that 2.2 only allows the private public schools to hire folks for fewer than 20 hours and the alleged violations going beyond that.
Correct.
And then my last question is, what is the remedy you are seeking, given that we're obviously now 2025, 26 school year, 24, 25 school year?
That the district comply with the current contract language, that the union receives notification prior to the district hiring a part-time classroom assistants? Because if you look further at the language, the last paragraph in Section 2.2, it says the board shall notify the union prior to any such hiring. And if the union and the board disagree as to whether a hiring decision is allowed pursuant to this section, the parties agree to arbitrate the matter under the jurisdiction of AAA in accordance with expedited arbitration rules. So we would like that we have the prior notice that there's intent to hire a classroom assistant for the allotted time per the contract, and that there's a reason why, because that's also stated in 2.2 that the district would provide the reason why they're seeking to hire someone on a part-time basis versus full-time, and that the union would have the ability to challenge that if the process was followed completely.
Okay, board members, any question for question for Bush?
I would like a clarification on the remedy you're seeking. As I understood what you said, correct me if I'm wrong. The remedy that you're seeking is that going forward, that the contract, as you understand it, be honored?
Correct.
And that is the sole remedy you're seeking?
Yes.
Thank you for your.
You're welcome.
My question, you mentioned that there were some classroom assistants that were hired on in excess of hours?
Yes.
All the way through from December to June?
September through June. And you will see that in the last exhibit. Exhibit Number Five, it goes through employee by employee with their start date and end date, and roughly, don't put me on the oath for this, but I would say 95-plus percent were hired in September or October and worked throughout the school year.
Okay, that was my next question was, you noted that out of 41 classroom assistants, 27 of them exceeded the amount of hours worked on the CBA? Or were.
Worked. Yeah, 27 exceeded the amount of hours that they're allotted. They're allotted 19.75 per week.
And was there a direct overlap as far as those 27 also worked in a full duration of the school year?
Like I said, the majority of the classroom assistants worked the entirety of the school year. But I do have it broken down for you in the exhibit. But I did look at it even today and saw that, you know, the majority of them did work straight through.
Very well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for providing the materials too.
You're welcome.
In the list, I think it's Exhibit Four. It's just a one major part. I count 32 people. But then, I don't remember if we hear about that, 41 people.
No, I can clarify that for you, and thank you for pointing that out. Union Exhibit Number Four, when the union first requested the information from the district regarding the names of the employees that were hired in this capacity, this was the list that was provided. The union sent an additional request because it wasn't clear that we were also seeking not only the scheduled hours that they were hired to do, but the actual hours that they worked. So Union Five is the actual hours worked, and there is some there's more members, employees, excuse me, on Union Exhibit Five than is listed on Union Exhibit Four.
Okay, and and then, so for some of the ones in Five, which is quite sensitive, we don't, we don't have that starting date information for those, but you're saying many of them weren't hired last year?
No, the starting date is on the Exhibit Five ones, the like, for example, the first one is Mariah. She was hired October 13th, 2023, and she worked all the way through June 21st, 2024. And these are broken up by pay period. So 1013 to 1027 is a is a full pay period? No, 1013 was a pay period. So she worked 10.5 hours in those two weeks. So that was complying with the contract. If you go down to her hours for 111023, for the two-week period, she worked 41.75. So that went over the allotted, and that's why I put an asterisk next to it.
Let me see that. Okay, so so in Exhibit Five, if the list starts on a certain date, do we interpret that as their their starting date of?
Yes, yes.
And so for in Exhibit Four, there are some, there are some people that have started way before 2023. Are they not in that Exhibit Five then?
This was, I requested all the classroom assistants for last school year, 2324.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Questions from the board?
You know, the administration or you're representing the administration?
Although you both provide that sets for both grievances, let's leave these one at a time.
Absolutely. This is for this two-point. Okay. Thank you.
So I'd like to walk the board through the exhibits that I'm sharing here. In sponsor agreements, the exhibits for Article Two include, obviously, the grievance form, the scene, the background. Copy of the superintendent's initial response to the grievance, which indicates that we had not permanently hired, or the members are kindergarten aides. We did not hire them intentionally to have the workforce and employment. And to build friendly bargaining missions. And the reasons why some of these individuals were working hours was to cover the war. Sorry, did somebody say something?
No, sorry.
Oh, I forgot. I thought maybe my mind wasn't. So and we shared with the union some of the reasons why we were experiencing some of these difficulties, which was due to the status of work shortages and then also the difficulties in covering when para educators didn't come to work if they were out sick or on nursing. So I share some additional data that I'd like to share. For the next page in the exhibit, the status of our hiring efforts, to kind of demonstrate where we were going from last year into this year. We were, we had met with the union several times throughout the year and talked about the challenges on hiring para educators and workforce charges and what we're doing to try and resolve that issue. So we left just a year last year, 2324, and moved into the summer anticipating we needed 194 para professionals, 10 RBTs. And as of July 15th, all of those positions were filled, but we needed 49 remaining positions to fill. Those are para educator positions to fill. Over the summer, we continued to recruit. As of September 10th, we were down to 24 vacancies. We've added a few more positions because of students moving in. So as of 9/17, we have 31 vacancies. So we certainly, you know, do everything we can to locate these individuals and get them hired. But at the same time, when we're in the school and there is an IEP, someone else needs to support them. So that, so certainly, they the schools are going to look around and see who else is available. That might be able to help that student on a temporary basis. And then in addition, I'd just like to share the next couple of things. They said that's just to give a sense as to what the absentee rate is for the para committee. So in speaking about last school year, the 20th, the fourth school year, we're supposed to consider that. And I would just point to a couple groupings of time. One is other. This is unpaid personal time. So it's 1,337.26 four days of unplanned unpaid personal time. And then sick days, 1,919.19 unplanned. Unstudied sick days. So those are the majority of where the absence is live for this school year and really kind of contributing factor, trying to utilize those staff in the building to accommodate those. And then I added a couple of other exhibits just to show a snapshot of where we are today with the rate of absence with the bargaining unit. So I ran the start of the year 24 until September, I guess, November 17th. And then I also ran on the next stage, the same time period with your state of school, 23 until September 17th. When it's 23. And if you take a look, just in the short amount of time school spent session, the rate of the absence has already increased from the earlier. So this is a contributing factor to why we are having difficulty meeting the needs of the student IEDs and and vacancies. It does force us to work around the building and see. I just have one point of clarification for Floyd. Would anybody like me to clarify in the union exhibits, the two reports? I can speak to that or not speak to that?
Much better.
So just as a point of clarification, I know Diana, you were trying to explain the two different reports. The first report was a request that we received to give all of the current kindergarten aides and lunch recesses, basically all the staff in that class situation. So at the point that we ran this reporting report, it was a point in time of who was on staff at that point in time. And then the remaining exhibit is a breakdown of the whole school year of pay period by pay period wages. So I just wanted to provide clarification that the two days represent two different weeks or days in time. That's why I got roster is different than the reports. So I just wanted to provide that.
Would you say, Diana? Yeah, question for the board. You do turn over the board number. So 2.2 says that the Board of Education will hire part-time classroom assistants and with circumstances that you can do that. How does that, personally, as these folks that we're talking about, are they permanent or temporary hires?
The kindergarten aides are not temporary hires. They are permanent hires. Who are scheduled, hired, and scheduled for, under coming out of early in the kindergarten classroom as kindergarten.
And what's the other class?
Lunch recess aid. Which, as described, they cover lunch recess, two hours per day. On a school day basis.
So the kindergarten and lunchroom aides are classified as permanent hires?
They're not temporary, but they're classified as regular permanent board employees.
Out of the hours that they worked, were they exclusively doing those job titles as far as kindergarten aide and marking?
That's what they're hired. They did additional work beyond that, but that's what they were hired to do. Yes.
So is there a way to get a look at how many hours were on on task underneath the titled position? There are some, the hours were off task and working out of classification?
The payroll reports don't capture that data, but that is something that we could certainly explore in the future.
Yeah, as far as absent days, how many total cares are would be included in this? How many positions?
The last school year, we had about 120, 120, 125 hours.
All right, so.
Add up the total number of days on average in each category, it's about a day and a half per month approximately. Doesn't mean everybody was absent a day and a half, but. Everybody was absent a day and a half, but yeah.
So so that's going to be twenty days a month. What's typical absence when we want to plan for it?
Well, I mean, since prior, since pre-COVID, the absence rate has been significantly higher than what we've ever seen. You know, prior to COVID, it was. But I can't, I don't have an exact set for you.
But it's sort of these, but these are like if we were just to go back to. To twenty two, twenty three, are they similar absences or are they more less?
I'm sorry.
Is it an unusual amount of absence that we have?
Since since the return from COVID again.
Sorry, but not, but this year might not be an outlier for the years.
I would say it's certainly consistent with the year prior. But I did demonstrate even though the court amount of time we back in the school year, it's already trending higher.
All right, thank you. So during, I was like, remind me, did we recently increase the number of sick days?
Now, now.
And and what's the the reason, if you may, for the over twenty hours?
They are helping with IEP students that there is no parent educator. That work back at or due to a vacancy. Do you want to think about, do you want to think of my home state of IEP adventure? We just wanted to add that it could be a safety issue. So there are some students who absolutely have to have an adult with them for safety reasons. There's also flighting that's involved. So they, you know, these are students that if we didn't have an adult with them, there could be some catastrophic.
Just a quick follow up. So with the permanent positions that were pulled over to help support. And working outside of their classification as far as kindergarten aides or lunchroom aides. Did they still work the hours as kindergarten aides that were allotted and lunchroom aides as were allotted?
Yes, that would have been their primary job was to work as a kindergarten aide and lunch recess aid first. And then fill in with the other hours that they were available outside of the kindergarten aid and lunch recess.
So basically, in order to figure out the differential, we could look at what they're contracted to do for. The the set amount of hours they're expected to work for kindergarten aides and lunchroom aides. And then the difference would be the extra support.
That would be correct if you looked at the reports as saying ahead. Keeping in mind that's over a two week period. So if they're expected to work just under forty hours in a period, anything, you know, forty and above obviously is a.
Now, working over. Forty hours in a two week period. Never mind, actually, that's that one. That's that's all I got right now, but.
Very nice, Mike.
Thank you. Not sure this might be a little off topic, if it is, just tell me, no answer. But for the IEP, is there support? Is there a difference in training that the Sarah professionals have versus the the classroom aide?
Yes, yes, there is, but there is a certified teacher available to provide. Training to substitutes and to people who are building in. And oftentimes these paras interact with the same students in the cafeteria and recess. So there is a level of familiarity on some, and sometimes.
And so so for that, for that, it is truly for someone else.
Yeah, I can answer your question. So it's truly because someone's absent or we have a vacancy. What we do do is if we need individuals for vacant positions who are not qualified. We do hire what we call a substitute para professional and we will work on qualifying them. So if we need a para professional in some reason, if they, we can't find them and. We will qualify them ourselves. We will basically allow them to work while they study and take the para pro. So in that situation, those are the individuals which would be what you described.
Thank you. Were there, I imagine that's not the only week. Need to have these open. So are there, are they for the extra hours in other capacities, like, you know, say in the front office, other classrooms or it's.
Yeah, I mean, certainly there are other, you know, absences and divisions. I mean, substitute teachers cover for teachers.
Well, yeah, I'm actually just talking about the classroom aides working. Hours beyond twenty hours a week is. Is that only because IEPs could, I I may have missed it because it's a lot of material, but that's all I heard.
Yes, only because of IEPs. We wouldn't move them around otherwise. I mean, we're just working to meet our legal obligation on the IEP. That's that's really the focus of conversation.
So now I'm like just front office or earth games like that.
You know, they have other individuals that can help with that.
I had some new questions, I've got some attendance, but. Um, so Billy, it depends, I was just trying to understand that. I I see where you pointed out, but it's actually. That's not the attendance started in eight thirty two thousand point three to end day six thirty two thousand point four, so. Last week. And there are many categories, the last column has a total. Three thousand five hundred eleven. That's hours. Days. And that and that's days where everyone through the the school system.
No, that is another day specifically for the members in the para or educator part. Over the course of the entire school year.
Does that? I haven't done the math, but does that number of days roughly add up the the number of hours? Extra of presently actually with what the union provided and what you provide the union that exhibit, there exhibit five.
I I haven't done a comparison, but what I would tell you is what I saw in the report is significantly less than.
And and that speaks to, I think, maybe that from the page before. If I understood that, it's not about vacancies. And I guess that's true this year, but some of that can fill by the para pro subs. If that's what's going to be.
Correct.
And so para pros are para professional.
Yeah, there's some, yeah, so substitute para professionals are essentially why I should use para educator psychology. Para educators, substitute bases are essentially hired to come in and be para educators, but don't need the qualifications. So we will qualify them on the job. So we just track them separately and identify them separately so we can ensure that we schedule them for the appropriate assessment. And then as soon as they've passed the assessment, we adjust this now as from they are no longer substitute or temporary nature. And they go into a regular para nature to be your classification. Like the insult in this call, the hill of Rome. Once it passes. Then you can sub to the bargaining.
Thank you, Jay. Do the para educators agree to work more hours? Are they agreeing to work these extra hours? And do they agree to work outside of their job description? Or are they not working outside their job description?
Jerry, can I just ask a clarifying question? When you say para educators work in the extra hours, are you referring to the kindergarten aide?
Yeah, whoever's working these extra hours.
So the kindergarten aides do, they are asked, and they are asked if they would like to volunteer for those extra hours. But so there and they understand, we've had a long standing practice well before my thirteen years here. Where substitute para kindergarten aides could work extra hours as a substitute para professional. When they were not working their kindergarten or lunch recess eight hours, that that fact that was existent or. This is the first time it's been really based as a concern. But we've allowed them to have those dual assignments and either if they were willing to make themselves available.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Yeah. Jeff, thank you. So in regards to the. The safety concerns as far as like certain students needing, you know. A pair of para support or para educator support. On account of like a imminent need. What's, is there any sort of training that's given or is there, as far as a need? That's being transferred over to cover that gap? The train that's specific to helping service the needs and that. In specific, safely and, you know, in a rational manner, as far as like, you know, behavior management.
Fact that there are certified staff members, there's usually a special ed teacher. Speech pathologist, occupational therapist. In many of our classrooms, we have BCDAs who are in this classroom. As well as other para educators working in some of those specialized classrooms or grade levels. Who provide support, training, modeling, coaching for that sub parallel when you're filling in and covering, but they can see more in absence.
So other staff that are certified have the lead and are present?
The paras don't press negotiation and not to para educators have to be supervised by a certified staff member. They're, they only work. Without that supervision and non instructional times like lunch and recess. All instructional times, there's a certified teacher, a general teacher, regular, a special ed teacher. Or another licensed service provider that's available and present.
And. The. Contract states that there must be some communication that happens from the district to the union. Explaining the need to hire people beyond the hours. If I'm understanding everything correctly. Do you have documentation of your communication to the union?
So I can speak to that and I I certainly see the language that they're talking about. As a matter of practice, it's never been practiced since I've been here. Prior union leadership was fine with us, you know. They never requested the information, we, we, prior to my time, it was never a practice to provide it, so.
Now, was there any communication establishing that with the prior union leadership? Was it agreed upon?
It was, it was practiced before I came, so I can't say that that was the case when I was, you know, interacting. It was a practice that was something before I. But I do see the language of the.
Good, thank you.
Just want to clarify, I want to hear. The folks that we're talking about. Were they hired to work twenty or less hours, or were they hired to work the other twenty hours?
They're hired to work less than twenty and then they volunteer for the other hours. If we have.
It's an obvious question, but maybe there's not an obvious answer. If you have. They're filling in for somebody who's. But they're filling in because you're trying to hire somebody that may find study. If not these folks. Who would deliver those services that normally are required under the IEP?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, you know, especially a teacher who do it. Students may be joined together, there's all types of strategies that give you. A substitute, an extra substitute teacher might be put in the room to help the teacher. Just to be sure that, you know, we have extra support him on while we're short of para educator. So it's a variety of solutions that.
Would would it be fair to say that the other bargaining aid members are not available because they're leaving their own jobs?
You're talking about para educators?
Yes.
Um, yeah, sometimes we do have to double up students up. And some is absent as well as structured, that's another strategy.
So in regards to the situation where there's a. The teacher. Or the special ed. Personnel is. Helping support. An untrained substitute para. Have you received any comments from the certified staff about? The burdens that puts on them? In that situation.
I know, I know. I haven't, I haven't had any conversation with them specifically on that, but I have had numerous conversations with the staff. Related to the impact that the employee shortage has had. On your workforce shortage, it has a significant impact on them, they're physically. It it requires them to be more on the toes, boiling, chasing after things who are low. It's emotionally very draining on them. And it's very taxing in terms of being an effective educator when you're covering. Multiple students and you're shorthanded with with support staff. So I would say I've had many conversations with them.
Thank you for that. And just to clarify, the. The pay rate for the kindergarten aides and lunchroom aides, that's, is that lower than? Para educators?
That's correct.
And could I ask what the differential is?
Sure, it's fifteen sixty nine for kindergarten aides, lunch recess aides. Same thing with substitute para professionals.
Could I ask that those who are not on the board or with the union not comment?
And I'm sorry.
Educators are sixteen ninety one.
And want to add anything for the last one?
I just want to reiterate that the language in Article two point two clearly defines when there can be hiring of these classroom assistants. And covering absences is not one of them. It's clear that it should be a vacancy due to attrition. When educational goals dictate a change in school programs or schedules and our curriculum. And that would reference a change in a student's IEP. And then when it such a change makes. Sense of having a part timer versus a full timer. And I'm assuming that that's also based off of the needs of the student. Based off of their IEP, so there must, there must be some correlation there between. The amount of support a student needs dictated by their IEP. The sub paris are not contractual at all. So there's nothing in the contract that identifies the district's use of sub paris. So I can't really speak to whether there's a violation of the district utilizing sub paris. And I would just lastly like to point out that the union, since I've been working with the union at Grotton Public Schools. Six years in January, has had an ongoing dialogue with the district regarding staffing. Recruitment. Issues related to short staffing. Covid and the pandemic where, you know, the district. In labor management meetings with the union. During the covid actual pandemic and then the year or two following that, there was an understanding. That the district had to put staff in the school system to service the students. That is why during my tenure representing these members, we haven't filed a formalized grievance for. We haven't filed a formalized grievance for the compliance of this issue because we've had. An ongoing working relationship with the district. It wasn't that we weren't aware that there were problems here. But we understood the circumstances, so we've had very good communications with the district about. Our needs and, you know, the contract language. And, you know, we've also tried to address these issues in various other means negotiations. But why we didn't. File a grievance before now, to answer your question, was because we had an ongoing. Dialogue with the district that we understood that they were doing according to their report. Everything they could and we understood the circumstances. The last school year. In labor management meetings in February and in April, I believe. We said, you know, this is really getting above and beyond. We're, we're not being notified, first of all. That this is happening. We had kind of a grace period where we understood that it was. Detrimental to the services of students that you get. Employees in here to cover for the students, um, but we really brought this issue to a head last school year. Because we had to address this issue moving forward.
Yeah, so in previous years, there were notifications?
Excuse me, no, no.
Just ongoing dialogue.
Ongoing dialogue, I mean, COVID, I mean, remote learning, I mean, there was a lot of things going on in the district. Um, and then this last school year, like the district is saying, they had a complete. Upheaval of how they could get sub paris. To get the para protest. They, they lost their, their source to do it. We met with them in labor management. They worked very hard to secure, you know, an alternative so that the turnover. From being a sub para to being a para educator could happen more smoothly. So if you're hired as a sub para, it's the understanding. Of the union that within a certain amount of time, you're going to sit and take the para pro and. Pass it, you know, and that you're part of the bargaining unit and therefore you're able to be hired. For the contract to do that work, paid for that work, um, so.
Um, this sort of circles back to a previous question to follow up on, I realized I didn't ask enough, enough detail prior to, so I apologize. Um. But, uh, so the aides have a certain pay rate, the paras have a certain pay rate. Do the sub paras, that job description, does that have a, a different pay rate?
Yeah, their, their pay rate is the same as the kindergarten aide.
And. Alright, so, and, and when they would work in excess of the hours, the, uh, was it nineteen point seven five hours? As an aide? When they worked in excess of that. Um. There's, that's all the same check though, right?
Correct, same rate of pay.
Right, same rate of pay. Because the sub para is the same as an aide. Alright, um.
But your early question that you're not report, you can clearly see. Those instances where they worked above that nineteen and a half, nineteen point seven five per week.
Right, so the, the one example I just saw, I don't know who it was, doesn't really matter. I saw forty-one point something total for a two week period. It's. So add nineteen point seven five. Yeah, right, yeah, so yeah, thirty, fifty subtracted from that number. But three hours-ish, but they worked as a.
And so.
Maybe supplement.
Jan, I saw your hand. Well, did you still have a question?
Yes, I do. Sorry if I fade in and out because I'm commuting. I'll be there soon. Um, question, um. And just because this is my first year and I'm new and I'm not really as familiar, but what obligation does the union have? Um, to assist the district with, um. You know, with personnel staff, right? Because we contracted X amount of number of personnel. And, um, for X amount of, let's say, um, sick time. And then if it's exceeding whatever was contracted, what obligation, if any, is the union, um. To assist the school district to help identify resources?
I would say that's the administration's job, not individual.
It's okay.
They've been collaborative, at least in trying to address the concerns.
Okay, and then sec- oh, go on, sorry. And then second, if, um. You know how like there's different types of cost account codes for different types of work performed? So if they are hired as a kindergarten aide, um, recess, um, aide. And then now they are working another sort of job. Do we track like a different job code for them? Because at that point, they're actually moving into a different type of role. I guess that's more for, yeah, that's more for administration.
Let's say, to answer your question, Jen, our payroll system does not, uh, disaggregate that data.
Okay, and sorry, last question, um, for now, um. So when you say they're contracted to work forty hours, is it really nineteen or twenty per week? Or can they do like all forty hours in one week? If they so choose, like how is that identified in the contract?
No, they're hired on, their schedule is given on a per week basis, so it's nineteen point seven five per week.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else?
So let me see if I understand. This question. Um, two point two of the contract. I don't have the entire contract in front of me. Just to make sure I understand. It's the union's decision. That the district can hire full-time classroom assistance, uh, part-time classroom assistance for fewer than twenty hours per week. Bargaining unit member will work. If. It's attrition and educational goals and et cetera, in other words. The absence of a, of a bargaining unit member. Is not an occasion. Not allow us to hire, does not allow the district to hire, um. Say, you know, like a, a kindergarten aide. Is there another provision in the, in the contract? That addresses what, what do we do with a temporary absence, like a sick day or something like that? And if this, my, my, my thinking was if this only applies to, basically, I look at this and I think. This is, this is what happens when we start to lose on a permanent basis. Paris, what do we do to replace them? This is, so this, this provision is to sort of shore up in the event of an attrition. Although it's not attrition, then what? But what, what, is there another provision that allows us to hire a substitute of some sort, a substitute small S? Uh, without getting into the, who the substitute is. Uh, so that's what I'm thinking. Does this provision apply for this situation or doesn't? Do we have another provision on the contract that deals with temporary absences? Not worried, yeah. I didn't, I didn't gang my, my copy from my bookshelf because I figured, well, summer in this room would be a cop.
I do have a copy if you want to look at it.
Do, but none of us are aware of it.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. This like there's not language specifically for substitute para educators, but the district. Has hired employees. Under that job title and like I said in the past, they've had a certain amount of time to take the para pro and become. Part of the bargaining unit, so that, that's the whole crux of it is that they're, you know. They're, they have the ability to hire classroom assistants for under twenty hours a week. For those specific duties that's listed that are not the same as para educator duties, but. The issue is, is that they're being used in that role to fill in for absences of para educators. And it doesn't meet the criteria for what we currently have for contract language. Sorry, I talk a lot with my hands.
I'm just, um, wondering if it looks like we have around thirty absent, there are thirty positions that should have filled right now. Um, do we normally, um, have more paras, maybe even going back to pre-COVID? Do we normally employ more paras than we need to cover expected absences?
No, we do not.
And it is, is, um. The amount of absences we have right now or open positions we have right now. Is that, um, similar to, um, the year prior to this?
Well, we, we have, um, we have significantly more vacancies and I would say the two years prior coming out of COVID. So, you know, I would say certainly the increased rate of pay that we negotiated in the most recent contract. Is having an impact. We are able to find para professionals. And we're seeing improvement this year than in the hiring statistics. Uh, because at this stage of the process. We would have been short more than thirty-one pairs this year. So we are seeing improvement, but there's the workforce shortages have not gone away. As Diana said, we've been very collaborative. We, we need regularly talk about these challenges, but the workforce shortages with para educators, that complexion hasn't changed. But it is improving slightly.
Sorry, a question, um, what about the remedy? Actually, I want to ask about the remedy. Or, but first just the details of the agreement. I could have a question on second sentence. The district is utilizing non-marginal members, you bargain with it for this is a union. Um, the district has also failed to comply with the contract, I would just say the article two, section two point two. Um, regarding hiring classroom assistants. So that said, it says, uh, not complying with two point two. Is, is that, uh, because of the sentence on, I think, two point two, it's the, and that's. Um, the sentence says the board shall not notify the union by the end of hiring. That makes sense that it's not complying.
It's all of it. There's specific criteria when. They can hire a classroom assistance for fewer than twenty hours a week. And then there's also the piece where the union is not being notified prior to the hiring of the classroom assistance. It's twofold.
And so, so have the, the, there's a A and C criteria.
Correct.
Position you haven't been notified.
Correct. It's hard for me to determine because we're not. Getting advanced notice as to why the classroom assistance being hired.
Okay, and, and so I, so I won't put anything, any words in your mouth, but I would like to ask you again about the remedy because I think that is. Part of it at least, but.
The union, um, would request that the remedy be that the district comply with the language per the contract. Specifically, article two point two in regards to the hiring of part-time classroom assistants. So that would be prior notification and that it's for the reasons that are allowable per the contract.
Thanks, uh, and then in, in the original grievance form, it says we'll comply with the contract. And make all affected employees whole in every way, but that was the part I was wondering about.
That's standard contract, uh, grievance language, excuse me, so. It's just a catch-all. Phrase that we put in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um, so if I'm understanding correctly, the remedy. From the union perspective would be to have a, I would say a formal notification with. An inclusion of the reasons citing criteria from the contract.
Right, it should be a written notification to the union with the intent to hire and the reason why. Because per the contract, the union has the right to dis- to disagree with that hiring. And could expedite it to arbitration if we're not notified of it and the reason. Then we can't utilize that piece of, of the contract.
And would that happen, so would, would the remedy, would the expectation of the union be for that to happen per occurrence?
It, it should happen per occurrence.
So per individual hire?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, on the remedy. So, again, you, you correct me if I'm wrong. For the district to comply with two point two. The only way we could have somebody pinch hit, if you will, substitute for a missing para. Because they're sick or they took a personal day or whatever the reason was. Um, but well, in fact, the only reason we could do that is because of attrition, but not because that they are out temporarily. Comes with a sick day. In the event of a missing para on a sick day or a personal day or what have you. The district would not be able to, because that is not, and it's not attrition. Is that the union's position?
That is correct.
Okay.
We don't have anything in the contract and there's not a position that we've negotiated. That allows for that kind of coverage, so I'm. Only basing this off of our current contract language and, and, and how the union interpret it, interprets it.
So in terms of that interpretation, how we can board. Fill in for those hours. Para educator who calls out.
I don't have the answer for that. I mean, I mean, I know a lot of, just like you have teachers that call out. That are not part of this bargaining unit, but I'm just citing that as an example. You can call an agency or, you know, you have people that you may have vetted. That are looking to be substitute teachers in that kind of instance. There's not that kind of system set up for para educators. At this time.
Um, and what's been the past practice with respect to that work?
We would, you know, ask for volunteers who will substitute. And para educators.
I too have been struggling to understand the remedy. Justifications that we had, the three justifications. One of them is scheduling. Includes scheduling. And if we have para educator A. Who is ill. Is not able to come in, whose family member is ill and not able to come in or. Uh, I distinguish between long-term, you know, long-term vacancies and. Absences, I see remedies possibly being different for those too. But a change in the schedule because of an absence, the way I'm reading it sounds as if that's the, the. That's the. That's what we're searching for, for a, a reasonable, justifiable. Need to fill a position so that the children don't suffer from the absence of a. Somebody in the room doing their very best under the guidance of certified teachers and other para educators. But let me move on to the, the, uh. Notification. Stipulating, stipulating that you're correct. How would we functionally notify the union on a day-to-day basis as absences become open? If, if, you know, our educator number twenty-seven calls in the last minute and says, I can't come into work. Not because I want to go out dancing, but because I can't come into work. We still have, we have a need. How would you see a notification? Happening in a, in a way, please express how this desire to be notified would actually play out. Because I'd like to find a solution for us.
Certainly, and the, the hiring, the district's ability to hire. Uh, classroom assistants for less than twenty hours a week. Is for very specific goals and the job description is different than a para educator. The problem is that we're having is when para educators call out sick and they're supplementing. That work to these employees that are hired as classroom assistants. This, when, this section B, when educational goals dictate a change in school programs. Schedules and our curriculum does not imply to the union a para educator calling out sick. On any given day. This is, you know, this is an I E P driven. This is, you know, this is an I E P driven change that is going to be known in advance. It's not going to be known on the day. Because these are, they're hiring these classroom assistants to work weekly, whether it be for three months, six months, the whole school year. They know what their the need is prior to them hiring. They've gone through the interview process. They've extended a job offer, you know, with rate of pay, hours of, you know, their schedule and what their responsibilities are. The issue is, is is twofold, that they're not complying with the criteria that they're supposed to be complying with in regards to hiring classroom assistants and we're not getting the notification. This is not, this language isn't for a call-out situation.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Your notification goes to hiring a new person, providing notice of that. Not the instance where somebody calls out and somebody's gotta work two more hours.
Absolutely.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I guess I, this is. I defer, but if anyone wants to go. Yeah, and we haven't heard you get time to. I've been all over the mic.
It just seems that these um the 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 contract language is so clear and so logical that why he would not comply with it is beyond me.
You talking about the notice specifically?
I'm talking about the actual language in the, no, not the notice, but the language itself that we agreed to. Why we would not, why would we put ourselves in this position? Because it seems so reasonable to comply with what we agreed to. I'm having a hard time understanding why we're not. So I don't know if that's a question that's but that's my question.
If if I understand the union correctly, we're simply trying to come out of the past practice and use the contract language.
Correct. I mean, like I said, we had, yeah, we had a very open, ongoing relationship in regards to staffing since COVID and and since it, you know, it's ended, you know, we this is to move things forward honoring the contract language.
Okay. Ian.
Um, so just this discussion about um criteria B. And um I brought up, I guess there's a bit of a tension here in the sense that you know, what constitutes a schedule change versus and then what constitutes a new hire? Right? So is there a threshold of time that needs to be defined here? Um, and frequency? Because just I'm doing a quick run through the the list here and you know, some, some people have gone over only slightly and infrequently and other people have gone over a lot um and very frequently. So I mean, I guess that that's another like area of of exploration. I mean, is that a thing that's just maybe not well identified in the contract? And if so, is there a would there be some need to amend the contract in such a way that clarifies what constitutes a new hire and um what constitutes uh a schedule change?
You want to take a try?
Answering that Diana.
Floyd. I'm not sure. I mean, I think that that and you know, my experts over here will correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, a student could start the school year off, you know, with one expectation, one set of goals and an I E P that the district is trying to comply with. And then three months in, they determine that there's more of a need, so they need more support. So they have to increase the hours allotted for that student, those kinds of things. Or the student leaves the district, you know, that that would, you know, that's a change in schedule, right? They're involved in a different kind of curriculum, you know, all those sorts of things play into it. But those things are, you know, they're followed throughout the school year and the district is working with the teachers and the principals and the special ed director, trying to make sure that students are evaluated as to what their needs are. And so they they fluctuate. So.
Can I offer and please disagree if you disagree? I don't think the interpretation of this provision is at issue in this grievance at this time.
I don't either. Uh, Jim.
I keep referencing um post-COVID. What was the behavior prior to COVID? And um but so that's just really, I want that answered second. And then open posting, would you say um best practice would be that before like the district puts the posting out that it's cleared with the union in regards to hiring of these kindergarten para um aides?
I don't think the union is seeking to have prior approval for a posting, you know, they you know, they have to, you know, solicit and maintain, you know, their employees and they do so at their own discretion. Um, we're looking at notification when someone is going to be hired. You know, so when there's gonna be, before there's an actual start date that there's some consultation and notification from the district to the union as to this is Susan Smith, we'd like to hire her because of this. And, you know, she'll be, her job title will be this and this will be her schedule and that kind of information.
Okay, um, I'm trying to be helpful, but if we do that before the posting goes out, then you'll by the time they're ready to make the hire, you would have already been notified. Would that be fair?
I wouldn't mind either way, but I don't think that you'd be able to do that. Yeah, no.
It's not.
Yeah.
Okay, and and then I just want to understand what was the behavior prior to COVID? Because everybody is always like, oh, yeah, this is like the behavior now post-COVID is the behavioral traits of the individuals who are in this role, like what changes have you seen?
I'm not quite sure the question when you move by behavior, you're talking about the past practice?
Yeah, because I've heard like when I was driving, it's like, oh, this is how we're behaving now post-COVID. But I was just trying to understand like what behaviors were in place or practices were in place prior to COVID.
Are you talking about the level of absenteeism?
Mm-hmm, and like, yeah.
Well, I I think it was discussed that for about the last twenty years past practice was this. And so the the whole crux of this is that they they want us to observe the contract language. And that's really all that we're discussing today.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, like we should, right? Like.
Yeah.
I just wanted to understand like what what changed. It looks like something happened in February, I think, like I heard when I was driving and something happened in April. There were like.
We had labor management meetings. We have them ongoing routinely and we discussed, you know, this issue. You know, with the district, the union and, you know, the they identified what issues they were having in regards to hiring and getting, you know, para educators. They had a huge vacancy for para educator positions and and what the district was running into in terms of access to the para pro exam and just people applying for the positions. I mean, after COVID, you know, and since COVID, education, you know, has it's pretty commonly known, has taken a hit, you know, um. You know, it's it's not an easy job to, you know, work in the school system. And a lot of people after the pandemic and during the pandemic made personal decisions as to whether or not they wanted to be part of the education process anymore. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Yeah, I was.
I knew you were driving, Jim, but they're basically just asking us to honor the language of two point two. Yeah, that's the basis for grievance tonight. So I just want to make sure you.
I heard that part, but I just wanted to make sure like what can we do to make sure, you know, like what what does good look like to them? Because we might come up with an option that we think is good, like how notification. That's why I was asking, like, how would you want, you know, like, um. What does good look like? Because if we're thinking like, yeah, we're notifying you via email or whatever, but that's not what you want, then that's not good. So just trying to understand what does good look like? And that's why I was saying like, hey, if before we even put a posting out in place, right, that's notification we're gonna hire. It's not like we're gonna put a posting in place and then decide to hire someone, then notify them. I don't really, in my mind, I don't really um see the difference. And I know I'm probably adding burden to the staff, but I just feel like, okay, um. What is good? Do you know what I mean? Because we might think something is good, so I'm just pulling in your information. It's like what you think is good. We may not like go with your recommendations, but you know, it's just something, it's like a snake in the ground.
Ian.
All right. Um, so just to follow up, um, I understand the scheduling thing is not really on the table. We're not contesting criteria B. Fair enough. Um, but the other part of my question had to do with like what what classifies a new hire first? And it's been past practice to, you know, flex aides over to cover gaps due to absences. You know, from the union perspective, um, you know, what triggers an alarm, so to speak, that this could be a new hire and not just a temporary um filling? Because again, like looking at the spreadsheets of these hours that were over forty in a two-week period, um, like some were very frequent and 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 excessive, like not excessive, like I mean, just like, it wasn't just three hours, it was like ten hours over, right? You know, so I guess what 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 triggers the alarm for a new hire situation versus um a temporary fill-in, as has been.
Um, I'm, I guess what we're doing is you.
And we'll just identify.
President Jennifer Corbial, sorry, of the union. And um if there's a new hire, I already get new hire letters for the paras that come. That's just a simple having Christine or somebody just shoot me that email for the going forward for the new people that they're hiring in this position. The people that you are using now in that position, if you know you're gonna need them longer than just a day or two, because I understand, let's just send me a memo. We have those status change memos, a quick status change memo saying, hey, this is something we're gonna have to go to. I mean, they're under the assumption they're working full-time hours and not receiving the benefits that we have. So I mean, I want that, maybe that's gotta be clear to these individuals that are working full-time, that when they're doing that, working full-time, they're not receiving the benefits that they would if they were hired in a full-time capacity. So if they're going to work full-time, that's just, and that's up to your discretion as to how you're gonna do it. But they should be known that there are benefits when you're working full-time that you will not be receiving because you're working full-time and you are choosing to take that.
I think that that's not accurate. I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, that the notification is, you know, anything, any hire of a classroom assistant that's gonna be utilized. We don't have any language for going over the nineteen point seven five hours per week. So I don't personally have an answer as to how the union would address that issue. It is still an issue. I hear that loud and clear, but currently we don't have a means in the contract to address that issue.
Which would circle back to my point is maybe that's what we need to consider as well as as a possible remedy. Um, I know what they're requesting, but um I'm not sure exactly what our our scope is as far as when we deliberate.
We're just, we're just answering the grievance, right, tonight?
Right.
And but this is definitely something we should think about in future negotiations.
Because it just sounds to me like there's like there's a missing component as far as defining what is a temporary fill and what is a new hire and a new status.
And I mean, just, you know, for clarification, I mean, we have some time to go before we're in contract negotiations. And speaking on behalf of the union, not that it's pertinent to this issue at hand tonight, but the the union and the district can at any point sit down and try to come up with some better way to address this situation, but and that we, it would be, you know, mutually agreed and negotiated between the parties.
Yep.
Currently, we don't have that. So I'm just going off of current contract language.
Nancy. And then you have another grievance.
We do.
So I'm understanding, Diana, that excluding new hires, that's themes, if I'm hearing correctly, the new hires, you're getting notification on permanent new hires.
Or bargaining unit position.
Correct, the president, the president, yes, sorry Floyd.
Thank you for the.
My apologies, but so moving along.
I guess I'm I'm asking what either A, what type of notification you'd be asking for before seeking asking existing assistants to take extra hours? Or B, are you essentially asking through the grievance for a contract amendment negotiation? What's the remedy you're seeking?
Like I said, we, I, the union is seeking that the district comply with current contract language. That's all I can bring to the table tonight. As far as where we go tomorrow and and beyond. The parties have always worked collaboratively to address situations. Notification would be the district notifying C S C A that they have an intent to hire. It could be an email. It does not have to be, you know, registered certified mail. We, you know, that would be perfectly acceptable. And so that that doesn't even prevent you from, you know, really, you know, getting that person on board because the union has time allotted per the contract to object to that. So I mean, it's very clear, the contract language as it is, does it fit the real world scenario that we're in today? No, it does not. But this is what we have at our disposal today.
And and I'm assuming, but I want to I'm assuming that the notification you would be looking for would be similar to the notification you're already receiving with respect to bargaining unit members.
Correct. And currently, a new hire that's in the bargaining unit, the district would notify the chapter president. Because this is a little bit different of a scenario, I would request that the C S C A, the bargaining agent for the bargaining unit be notified of intent to hire um for the classroom assistance for this specific situation. The status quo for the hiring of any bargaining unit position could remain as it is currently. The district also sends monthly updated reports of the current membership. The classroom assistants wouldn't be on that report because they're not bargaining unit members. So that is another reason why, you know, we didn't know that this was happening. We only have the ability to know what we know when we know it. So that's the other reason why the there's been a detainment and getting to this level that we are at tonight.
All right, you want to present the next grievance?
Oh, sure.
Any chance we could take a brief recess before that?
Any objection? Take a five-minute recess?
This is just a special.
If you want booklets, I can get them, but I can't get them soon because that looks so similar. Oh, good, good. All right.
But, yeah, no, I'm very cross.
Oh, no problem. No, not at all. What is your name?
Jennifer.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, prior to this, it's, they've, they've not worked over the nineteen point seven five. So that's the problem too. You're welcome. Oh, great.
Thank you for speaking now. I think. You're gonna pay them about fifteen dollars an hour. It is a long day. That's what. On a positive note, I got to see my son today. He's okay. He, um, he's jumping into the college world. Like you wouldn't believe, he applied to be a student ambassador. And he got accepted. Is that Brian? Which is a business school in Rhode Island. So, yeah, he's having a good time. Um, funny. And, um, he's either thinking data analytics or entrepreneurship as a platform. Either the, either of the two is fine. He didn't? Yeah, no, he didn't. I don't know. He's friends with Gianni and Calvin. They're all like, yeah, yeah. I don't know why he didn't. He didn't. Okay. So he ended up getting. He did okay. So he did fine. I know other kids got the whole ride, but I was, I wasn't really surprised at that. So he did okay for himself. I told him, I go.
I did say that. Okay, thank.
So they can insert on the job, they have to leave.
Are we ready? Coming out of recess. Right. So the board is coming out of recess at seven thirty nine P M continuing our special meeting. And I'll turn it over to Floyd.
Um, moving over to the second grievance, Diana?
Yes. So in your packet. I'll just start going through this. This grievance was filed. On June eighteenth, Union Exhibit One is the grievance that was filed. This is in relation to Article nineteen, seniority reduction in staff and recall. And as always, what the union uses the catchall and all other related articles. Um, details of the grievance, the district failed to give at least two weeks notification. To members of the bargaining unit per the collective bargaining agreement as stated in Article nineteen. Section nineteen point three A. If you look at Union Exhibit number two, I made a copy of the contract language. Uh, nineteen point three A, the decision to reduce the number of hours. Of staff shall be at the sole discretion of the board. The board shall however, give at least two weeks. Notification of layoffs unless such layoffs are due to a change in student special education program. The union met with the superintendent and the director of human. Resources on June tenth, twenty twenty four. President for the union was myself, Diana Bush, and the chapter president, Jen Corbeal. The union discussed that the district had violated the collective bargaining agreement by not providing the proper notice. To the tutors that had received layoff notice on June seventh, twenty twenty four. I'll reiterate, the collective bargaining agreement states that the district will give at least two weeks notification of layoffs. The union contends that this includes being paid for the period of that two week notice. The affected members received five day notice and pay prior to the effective date of layoff. And I have Union Exhibit Three, but if you could just make a notation that it is actually. Um, page two, there's two exhibits, there's, uh, Union Three. One says Union Three, page one, and one says Union Three, page two. Forgive me, I made an error. Um, the, the page one is the notification from the district that the employee would. Could reasonably assume that they would be. They would be being brought back for the upcoming school year. The page two was the notification that the district sent out regarding the layoffs. Of the tutors on June seventh. The union had discussions with the board regarding the concern of potential. Future tutor layoffs in labor management meetings both in February and April two thousand twenty four. The conversations pertain to how the process of layoffs were going to happen. And the board shared in these meetings that they would be looking at tutor seniority. Student needs, funding, and we're in the process of meeting with the schools principals to further determine. The district, district's needs regarding tutors. The union chapter president emailed Lori Lepine on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Union Exhibit Four, asking when the, asking when the union and affected members would receive layoff notification. Exhibit five. Lori Lepine responded on May twenty eighth that she was working on it and that it should be completed by the end of the week. Notice to affected members regarding layoffs should have been issued by May thirtieth, twenty twenty four to comply with the collective bargaining agreement. Reiterating, the board shall provide notice of layoffs with at least two weeks notice of layoff. Tutors received, tutors that were laid off received notification from the district on June seventh. The union filed a grievance regarding this on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. The, you, the board's grievance response was issued on July first, Union Exhibit Number Six. The board stated that the union leadership was aware months prior that there would be layoffs issued to tutors. And the board stated that the budget wasn't finalized by the town until May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The board cites that as, excuse me, the board cites that they did give proper note of. Notice inasmuch as the elimination is in effect for school year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five. And that this begins on July first, twenty twenty four. The union's contentions in this grievance are that the board violated the collective bargaining agreement. By failing to provide notice regarding layoffs per the collective bargaining agreement. And you can reference that back to Union Exhibit Two. That the notice of layoffs were issued to the affected members on June seventh. Twenty twenty four, and that's Union Exhibit Number Three, and that's a two page document. So. That is on page two of that two page document. Union Exhibit Number Seven is a list of employees. That receive layoff notice. I'm just going to point out to you on the exhibit seven that the. Employees that are shaded in your exhibit are. Employees that were given notice that they could expect to return the following school year. Starting with number eight, seven, one, oh, that's not shaded, moving on to the second page. There were fifty two tutors that were given layoff notice on June seventh. The union contends that the board had full knowledge of the upcoming school year, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Prior to submitting it to the town for approval on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The union is asserting that in order to present it at town council for approval. That they would have had to have their budget numbers prepared well in advance of that meeting. The union acknowledges that there were discussions between the district and the union regarding the possibility of tutor layoffs. Both in labor management meetings and email exchanges between the parties. The union, however, disagrees that these conversations constitute the board's obligation to provide notice. Of impending layoffs or that it negates the board's obligation to comply with the collective bargaining agreement. The union contends that notice is when the district notifies the affected employee. That they will be laid off and this notice of layoff occurred on June seventh, twenty twenty four. The district notified the affected members of their layoff on June seventh, twenty twenty four. The last day of school for the school year, twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four was on June thirteenth. Two thousand, twenty twenty four. For the affected employees to have been given proper notice as per the collective bargaining agreement, the notice should have been issued. To the employees by May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Excuse me. The union contends that the two week notice regarding layoff entitles the affected members. That their layoff notice be issued to them at least two weeks prior to being laid off. And that this two week period is also a paid notice. This did not occur as the notice was sent by the district on June seventh, twenty twenty four. The district only provided the affected members with five days' notice before the end of the schoolwork year. The union requests that all affected employees be made whole in every way per the collective bargaining agreement.
Diana, the five thirty date you're using is the date by which people should have been notified? Where does that come from?
That would be two weeks.
Before the end of school?
Yes. They could have been notified on the thirtieth. That would have, you know, on or before.
Yeah, my same question from before, the remedy you're looking for. I know you just ordered the language in there, but. I mean, again, it's sort of water over the bridge. Is this a prospective, um?
No, I mean, the, the issue, you know, part of the issue is water under the bridge. Because the members have received notice and they got, they're laid off. Um, since the layoff notice, there has been. Attempts to secure positions for those affected members. Um. So I don't have that information in tonight's context, but. It's something that we could look at because we have time before there needs to be a decision rendered. Um, the, when the. Grievance was filed, we were looking at primarily that the notice was violated and that the notice equates to the union. The two weeks notice that you no longer are going to be employed by the district. and that that two weeks' period would cover their pay for those two weeks as well. So the union is requesting that those employees be made whole in every way, they got five days' pay of a two-week notice, so we are looking for pay for those affected employees.
But they were paid through the last day of school, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So you're looking for, if I'm clear, seven?
They had five days' notice of a fourteen day. So I think it would be six days working days. And like I said, some of these members are coming back or did come back this school year. You know, and we'd have to, you know, weed that out, you know, some have sent you know, notice that they no longer wish to be on a recall list, but I think that's a separate issue than what I'm trying to present tonight. So I mean, there's extenuating circumstances, and I don't know how they affect the remedy that the union is requesting. Because in my instance, in my history of dealing with layoffs, it's always been, per the contract, the notification and and the employee would be working up until their last date. Because it's a school system and the school year ended, we run into this issue where they're they could not have worked beyond the end of the school year, so.
No, okay, yeah.
Uh, just a so a question, uh, just a clarification on the date situation, I'm just looking at the calendar here. So two weeks, that would be ten working days, or is it?
It's it's business days, I'm assuming, because they received notice on the seventh.
Which is a, uh.
And they worked until the thirteenth, that's how I'm determining that they had five days' pay.
Okay.
But then they should have the end of the day, but they, that's still notification.
Okay.
Did I answer your question or no?
Not entirely, but um.
It would be working days.
Okay. So it'd be the bound the the balance due, so to speak, in that perspective would be five working days? Since five were paid? Is that a correct understanding?
Well, they should have, because they got notice on the seventh, two weeks would be through the twenty-first, so that's one, two, three, five, correct.
So the differential of five?
Yes.
And that would be, is that an official proposed remedy as far as something that would make these employees whole?
Yes.
So so notice is given on the seventh, and you're contending it should have been given on the thirtieth because their thirteenth is the last day. So from the thirtieth to the thirteenth, that comes in fourteen day, i.e. two week period, that's what's referred to with the contract, right? The contracts have two weeks, so.
May thirtieth, it should have been issued on or before May thirtieth.
Right, so working backwards from June thirtieth, you'll land on May thirtieth, so I get that math.
Yes.
Since they were given notice on the seventh, uh, that's a a week too late, and that's your that's your contention. And I want to make sure that I heard this correctly, and if I didn't, then correct me. Are you contending that they were only paid up to and including the seventh, although they were in fact paid even though the seventh they got notice on the seventh that they were paid through the thirteenth?
They were paid through the thirteenth.
So had they been, so had they been given notice on May thirtieth, it would have been paid through May thirtieth, through June thirteenth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I got that straight, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next page is the contact language that the question was raised about. Um, a couple things I have to share as I'm I see that it does say that you get at least, excuse me, it's notice of layoff. Um, I will point out, it doesn't indicate that if you get working-based notice, it doesn't indicate that you get an A notice, so I just want to keep that out of the language. Additional page, uh, I share for the purposes of discussing the next items on the contact language. Item six point one indicates that employees will be notified of their assignment for the upcoming school year. I want to point out that if not until August fifteenth. Information available. And also attached are additional copies of the letter, these are the same letters that Diane had shared. I follow that, they're not the same letters you had shared, you had shared the notifications. Um, but what I wanted to share is two letters which demonstrate the process of notifying unit members if they will have assignment for the following school year or not. We call it a reasonable insurance letter, so each year we issue what's called reasonable insurance, so once the budget is finalized by the town, we then take and notify anyone um in this unit who has the expectation to return in the position of the following school year. So on June seventh twenty twenty four, consistent with what Diane has said, we noticed those staff members who have reasonable insurance to return, and we also noticed those staff members who did not, that letter is not included in here, it's included in Diane's exhibit. And then for illustration purposes, I just wanted to provide the prior year's notice, although there were no layoffs um at that time, the timing was issuing that notification around the year prior, we issued the same notification in the same place on June fifth. So those are the notifications that we provide once the budget is finalized to determine if they will have a position to return to the following school year. If they do not, um, they go into the customary summer break period knowing that they can look for a job the entire summer break. And then the last exhibit here is a similar um report that Diana had mentioned, it provides the all of the staff members who are notified on June seventh who would not be returning in the twenty-fourth, twenty-five school year. Um, and this is just an additional status update where we identify um the majority of the individual we have helped find employment in in some other capacity, whether it is with us or other individuals. So the majority of them have um accepted other employment opportunities. So that's just our latest status updating on the individuals um who received those layoff notifications. Then I would just mention the um the point that although the notice was less than desired the two-week period, they would have only been paid until June thirteenth, there is no financial impact to be not receiving an additional week's notification because their pay would have only been one until June thirteenth anyway. And then we would have went into the customary break period. I think as Diane mentioned, you know, that contract language and the expectation of a leave makes sense in a situation where we are not in a school system and we don't have these customary breaks that automatically happen and individuals aren't working or being paid. Certainly understand the implications of giving them more notice rather than less. But in the case where we were approaching a customary break and the staff would not have been working for us, being paid by us, um, there isn't a financial implication to giving the less than two weeks notice. So I just wanted to share that information.
When did the administration know for certain what its budget was going to be for FY twenty-five?
It would have been when the town finalized the budget, which was May oh, May twenty-fourth, I believe.
And um, what would have been the next payday? Uh, the next actual work day in which they were paid these folks and they soon, maybe in August at some point?
I'm sorry, are you getting to the end of August?
If they weren't laid off, when the last school day was June thirteenth, remember the next work day would have been, have they not?
Oh, it would have been the start of the school year, but would have been August twenty twenty-eight.
When was the last day of school, twenty twenty-three? The last day of? No, twenty twenty-third.
The prior school year, yes?
Graduated, it's sixteen. Sixteen? Graduation's sixteen. The last paid day that graduation was at a school day in twenty twenty-three?
I don't.
These personnel would have been working and paid for.
The the last day of school in twenty twenty-three is yes, they would have worked. If you're trying a year ago, yes. They would have worked up until the last day of school.
So same, so it's June thirteenth date for this year.
Same timing, they noticed at the same time, they would have ended on the last day of school, same time. Is that your question, Ian, did I answer that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get like an apples to apples comparison here, like accounting for the difference in in actual dates. From here to here.
Oh.
So. That's a sixteenth, it was? In twenty twenty-three?
That's my calendar.
I've got this phone on.
Yeah, so, good question, uh. You know, is it sixteen? All right, um. What's expected that that would have been a paid day for these personnel? Whether it's in twenty twenty-three or in twenty twenty-four, graduation date is a paid day?
Not a graduation, it's on the last day, so. It's they work whatever the last day of school is.
Right, this year, the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, there are no classes held on that day. So graduating that, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
The last day for the thirteen graduation was the sixteen.
In twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Yeah, I know, I can. So they were the fourteenth.
Okay, it was the fourteen.
Was the fourteen.
In twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, um. And if I remember correctly, uh graduation was passed here in twenty twenty-four was on the fourteen. So the last day of classes was the fifteen. Yes. I remember significantly because there was no classes being held at that, and as of not sure if you can answer this, but what what was the what was the effective date of the layoff?
The the runner doesn't specify that today. We always use for all of our purposes June thirty, because our fiscal year starts on the last Thursday. So we consider all the employment contacts for that year close on June thirty.
So it's sort of related, last question. For those people who were laid off, when could they first collect unemployment if they chose to do so?
They they filed immediately upon layoff, so if they if they had continued to work for us, they're not eligible during the customary um school break. But when you notice them of a layoff, they are allowed to file immediately, so those individuals are able to file, receive unemployment all summer. If they had not found other.
Okay, uh, my other question, so I'm looking at the um, it's the July first, I think it's it's denying the grievance, and there are three paragraphs there, the one is dying it, the second one is forms of notice that when it already incurred. And then the third one is about the we're talking about like the timing at the end of the school year and then the start of the new school year. That middle paragraph, which is long, is it speaks to the union level and school system level discussions. And 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 then we have the union exhibits, I think all the that that was the seniority and where the the line was for layoffs versus some jobs. At what point in in the discussions, did people know individually that do they see their names on this list? Or was it, did that happen earlier than their notice in the seventh? Or was this more of a gentleman, you have to kind of base yourself on your position? And people don't know that.
That's a good question, I I mean, I can't speak to what the union may have shared, but they're not a ship, but but the district's official notice was students.
So so prior to that, there's no, like, it was linking a person's name, but that you're you're like, let me say, or it's like, right.
We would not have put those types of reports out in the public.
But this was all tutors, right?
Yes.
Oh, and then my other question is, so we talked about, I can't find it was, it's actually nineteen point three A, which is that you have that notice. You know, and actually, they said that about how reductionally they and then nineteen point four A B M C, talking about recalls and making lots for recall, that seems like that's all contained in the in the in the letters that were sent out.
That's correct.
So, so I guess that that part is, I think, that's the
Correct.
And so it really is the song, and the seniority part is to be there, it really is limited to this nineteen point three.
Isn't it possible to have a precise date for two things? The date of the union request for the seniority of this? And same is the date provision to the union of seniority.
I don't have any, something you collaborated on those.
Yeah, June fifth, this this list. That was. Was issued to the union. Leadership, myself and the chapter president on June fifth. But that wasn't noticed, the notice to the members was on June seventh.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't know if I understood it.
And uh dude, how long will it take them to respond to your place?
We had ongoing conversations in labor management that this was impending, that this. There was going to be layoffs of tutors. The chapter president. Had emails, I don't have them.
They put in May.
Yeah, oh, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. The chapter president sent an email to the H R director, asking specifically, did they have their list? Finalized of employees that were going to be receiving layoff, because we wanted to make sure that our members got the two week notice. And the budget. The district has said in response, they brought it to town council on May twenty four. So the union has argued that prior to bringing their budget to town council, they wouldn't have had to have drafted that budget for the upcoming school year. They would have. What they had, you know, for budget constraints and what. They need to do in terms of layoffs, and then on the May twenty fourth, the town council approved the budget for the upcoming school year. That would have given the district. The two week notice period for the contract. So I don't know what the obstacles were beyond. The town council needing to vote on the district's budget, which all was done by. May twenty fourth, so the members needed to receive notice by May thirtieth. To comply with the two weeks' notice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is gonna be a question for you, should you, there are two questions, we'll go back and forth. And so it's. It's uh is it the union's position that the notice? Required by the contract is the is it is notice to be given to individual employees and not the not the unit itself?
Correct.
And and the district's understanding is what?
I I would agree with you again, individual notice is.
Individual notice.
Letters to each.
Okay, so next question. Your understanding is it's got that the two week notice has to be two weeks ahead of the end of the year, in this case, right? In the school year.
Yes, that's where we get them.
The class, classroom year. It sounds like the district's position is that you think the 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 end of the year is June thirtieth, because that's the fiscal year.
Correct.
And from a reasonable journey to effective, there's been times when you've issued a reasonable assurance of let letters effective at the year end, but prior to June thirty. Depending on how busy we are.
Is that because you consider the contracts, whether it's futures contracts or anybody else's contracts, the one from July first, June thirtieth? Thank you. Thank you, Dean, for for asking that question and clarifying, um. Right, so I guess, I mean, that's something that needs to be in my. But it seems like that's a that's a discrepancy that needs to be clarified and and established and agreed upon. By whatever means are, you know, proper and legal. Because just looking at at this, I mean, for. Neither neither year was there. In in twenty twenty four, there are five working days. You know, um between June seventh and June thirteenth. Seven calendar days. And then in twenty twenty three, there were eight working days between June fifth. And June fourteenth and ten business, uh sorry, ten calendar days. So. Neither year would have satisfied the union's concerns as far as having a a full two weeks' notice. So it seems like maybe that's a discrepancy that needs to be remedied in some, like I said, in some fashion. Just to get. A shared understanding of terms and definitions as to what constitutes standing in school year. Thank you.
And I'm just, you know, adding that there haven't been layoffs to address this issue prior, so. This is like a test, a litmus test of this language as well, because the district has not issued layoffs. Um and, you know, the district is accurate in saying that there was. Assurance for continued employment, you know, has gone out at various different times, the union is gonna. You know, differentiate that, you know, layoffs and you're coming back next school year are two different situations.
Just a whole question, or both of you actually, um. This seems, this seems like this probably has come up with other school systems, I was wondering. If if either know about, I think perhaps to decide really. What what constitutes two weeks' notice really is about, and one. One that would be like, what what that ending was, the starting day of the school year and the end date of the. Of the starting of the next school year, the end date of the current one, or the end date of fiscal year. I was just wondering if anyone knows about that being occurring in other schools.
I I can tell you this, I've been doing this for thirty seven years. We represent more than a thousand school districts. And this precise question has never come up. In in other contexts, the question is, when is the layoff effective? And that's why I asked the question about. That's why I asked Lori Lori to that question, and we argue, you know, you can argue. It was effective their last day of their regular work, or the last day of the. Uh this, because that's they're being laid off because the budget, so it's the last day of the budget. Or you could argue it's. Why one, or you can argue it's when they were supposed to report to work, that's when the layoff became effective, and there's no clear answer. My view in the contract, but they use.
And this might be kind of a deliberation, but I'll I'll just say, that's why I was asking about the uh when they can file for other points.
Um the follow up on that, so. If the. Layoff date, or the the layoff notice was issued on June seventh. Will they be able to apply for unemployment? To starting. On the date of June fourteenth, as far as like the first day that they're not gonna get paid.
Yes, I believe unemployment would qualify that as a first day, they're no longer working.
And that was, yeah, the last day they're expected to report to work. It would be the last day of classes. Alright, so. And I think.
Employment rules are irrespective of.
This goes here.
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't. File the same cycle as far as budget year, it's like that. Again, those.
And you may not know this, but in the context of municipality and the board of education. This isn't insured. Do you you pay that on the line?
I think it's.
It's the claims. We are, we are not a contributory employer, as Boyd's mentioning, where you pay a tax and the state pays the claim. Municipalities pay the actual money. So while they weren't working for us, we were obligated to pay for whatever unemployment things they wanted.
So state, and then you're required to ring.
Resource to save the state.
Where is that?
There's a, there's a line item for.
Just have my my same question for last thing, but at this point, if you just clearly say again, the remedy you're seeking.
The remedy that we're seeking is that if the district needs to lay off our bargaining members, that they receive. A proper two weeks' notice, and that that two weeks' notice would include that they would be paid for that two weeks' notification period.
And is that going forward or also reverse?
This is to address the current situation with the layoffs June seventh and moving forward.
So so you're seeking.
Yes.
One one week?
Six days.
Oh, that's fine.
Five days. Five days, so.
For how many employees?
Fifty two.
And just a quick follow up to that, okay? So I'm sorry, you you made a citation, I I was making note about something else at the time, you. Before you said a two weeks' paid notice, where where is that coming from?
That's just the 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 union's interpretation of what a notice for layoffs means. Historically and past practice, if you're giving a layoff notice, that that period would be a paid notice.
Is that, is that specified in any statute anywhere?
I haven't researched that.
Right, but another, like in private sector, that is. A common practice. Right?
Well, I mean, board of ads are a little bit different, I'm not even gonna get into the private sector, private employees, because they have a whole. Different one of, you know, reason. By ones that they adhere to, whether they're having contracts or. But in the board of education, because it's not three hundred and sixty five days a year. Um that um the union is using the last school day as the the end, so if they were going to issue layoffs. That's why they had the May thirtieth, that would give the employees notice two weeks in advance. They they would be paid because they'd be working till the end of the school year, and all bases would be covered, and the union believes that the district couldn't have done that.
Right, and and. For employee, uh just to paraphrase the contention, now my understanding of it, from the employee's perspective. The last day expected to report to work and the last day that you're, is the last day you're expecting to get paid for. Like, so any notice attached to that would be two weeks prior to that date. And not inclusive of the. Non-working days in that period. Right, so in as of being attached to business days and not calendar days.
Correct, business days, working days.
Understood.
Thank you.
But if I may follow, well, the contract doesn't say hit pay, it just says notice, right? And. They would not, under any circumstances, but for the layoff, been paid after the June thirteenth, right?
Correct.
They were paid from June thirteen. And in fact, if they hadn't been laid off. They would not have. Been paid the summer beginning on the fourteenth, but they were.
That's correct, but it's the discontent that. Because they did not receive the proper notice that they're going beyond. The pay for the end of the school year, if it would have been done. In the third year, they would have gotten the proper two weeks' notice, and they would have been paid for that notification period. So this is why it's a little bit of a gray issue, because the school year ends abruptly, you know, we can't extend it.
So. The union is looking for pay. Up until, including the first.
Five days, because they they had noticed six days. And events.
So they got a notice on June seventh. So if you say fine, if that's gonna be the two weeks' notice. And you go two weeks forward from the seventh, they should be paid the two weeks up to including the twenty first, however many days we're businessable talking about. Is that the position?
Let me get my calendar. Correct.
Okay.
There's one more question, um. Forgot, oh, I hear this, um. Do the parent, many parents of work over the summer, I, because we have summer programs. And summer school, I keep soft there.
Yes, there are individuals who work in the summer programs.
But those summer hours are classified as bargaining positions.
Agreed, she's correct.
So that that special payroll, that's a separate. Okay.
So like he does have a summer payroll account. Start. Like, like he's like paying off that summer.
Are you, are you referring to the summer programs?
Did she mention that there was a summer payroll account that that?
I'm just saying that once the school year ends and summer work begins, that work is not covered under the collective bargaining agreement, and I don't. Our bargaining verse. In in terms of this contract, the school year is a hundred and eighty one days.
So the summer works in July, and it's our summer programs. Diane is correct, it's not part of the effective bargaining agreement, those are programs that are run, um and unit members may apply it. But it's not, it's not bargained.
Those exactly, one more question, um. Kind of reason this out a little bit. So. If if the the people that were laid off, even though it's a June seventh, were to get that extra week. Where i- if they would have gotten that extra week, could have paid. Um like, they still don't find June seventh, instead of getting one week pay after that, it's two weeks' pay. When would that? When could have that occurred, would it have had to wait till? Um the start of this school year in August, and then with that. Reset the eighteen months, but as a connected question, when is the eighteen months? Notification part start, and then and how would that affect being able to apply for unemployment?
Can they answer all those?
So the two parts are, like, logistically, how, okay, it's June seventh was the notice, it was only one week less of a period.
Yeah.
For the end of school.
Yeah.
So if if they were to be paid for another week. When could that have happened?
It would have been paid in the next pay cycle in June.
And and that's fine, even though it lapses in the, is that thing that outside of contract at that point?
No, because the the pay cycle could follow the completion of the work, I mean.
It is your question, would they have been eligible to collect unemployment at the same time period if a date of a full two weeks?
That that that's sort of the question, I guess, I guess the. That was sort of my follow up, but the first one is, logistically. How could they have been paid for that next week, I guess, it wouldn't be any. Connected effort. Because the summer programs are different, but I'm just wondering how that could actually. Have happened, or is there something?
Well, I mean, I think that's something that we're deliberate on, because we'd be paying them for not performing work for five days. But that is. So I'm not, I'm not hearing any very good question, well, but.
I would interject that because the notice wasn't met, and still. Point of mind in reference still needing to be. Paid for five more days, that you could equate that to like a severance, so that would have been, that could be issued the last. Paycheck that included their actual working hours. That's just a thought.
Then we would have to something on the board that. For already on that same period. So that's something we have. It's okay, all go out at that point, you might double dip, and unemployment will have an issue with that.
Severance is created by unemployment, exactly the same way of paying.
Yes, that's right.
That's another week.
Yes.
It doesn't matter, you get fired, um or have a separation agreement, can we get paid out for a month?
It doesn't matter, you get fired, um, or have a separation agreement, when you get paid out for a month. And, uh, severance, you cannot start collecting unemployment. You have to tell, the employees to tell unemployment without the severance, they will ask that question. And then you can't start collecting unemployment until after the severance. So if we issue. A payment to them, they would have to move toward it to the state. Yes. And they would have to repay.
Yes, they would have to repay the unemployment benefits that they received during that, for that same time. I anticipate that would be the revenue, but.
And, uh, it's, and typically unemployment benefits are roughly about fifty to sixty percent of the regular banks.
Right. I, I think it's roughly, you know, sixty percent. I don't know the exact numbers, but.
That's my question. So there. There would be a net positive. For the employees affected. But not the full amount of the five days, because there would be a deduction. That's, they're right about, right?
You can take questions.
If they collect an unemployment, which would have to be documented, I guess.
A lot of variables.
That's a question.
If, if that's the way the state chose, that's the situation, I, I don't know how they really want it. But they will have an issue with issuing them, that's for the same week in which we kind of have an.
Pass this question, um. It, would we run the, I shouldn't say we do run this. Since the next actual workday would have been. At the end of August. Could that, in somebody's eyes, say, alright, well, now they were employed. Through the summer, you got the, maybe this is a question for Floyd, you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Cause the next day would have been August thirty and the twentieth, or whatever. Um, that they would have been paid for it, if, um. Were to pay those five days, now all of a sudden, were they employed through the summer?
No, an impact there is higher, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. Question. Because, because, uh, because June fourteenth. Or fifteenth, or whatever the first non-day at school was. Um. Would have not been paid anyway.
Yeah, I truly don't know the answer to that, but. My question to Diana is, are you looking for it for those people? Who were, where the layoff was reversed as well? And they were offered employment this year.
My response to that at this time is yes.
Um, just to, I think maybe answer Adrian's question, um. To my understanding, I guess, if, if, if. The pay, oh, I'm sorry, did I, we, you're up?
Yeah, but don't.
Um, if the pay was classified as a severance pay. And not attached to working days. Then, and it occurred, would be, you know, issued. Retroactively. Assigned to dates prior to the end of the. Um, fiscal year. That would, I think, resolve the concern that Adrian was trying to identify. Cause it wouldn't, like, the, the, the end of the fiscal year is a hard stop for. Um. You know, payments out. Or whatever. And then we have to spend that money for. Right. Because. I'm just thinking with it.
Okay.
Back to Dean's, uh, this is going back to Dean's question, like, on the dates. Um, so. If we're. To follow that logic, the first day of their, um, that they can collect unemployment would be twenty fourth.
If they were paid in two weeks?
Yes. Cause then that impacts a lot more. Was it five? So, so it'd be the twentieth, and then it'd be the twentieth.
First eligible date for unemployment, the twenty first, it's a.
Okay.
And I just like to talk on to Ian's question, is that, I think that the word's gonna also consider, um. How they would even be able to pay something for that, even if they paid a severance retroactive to human, for this year's.
Precisely the question I was going to ask. I don't know, we'd have to come out of this year.
Well, are we, are we varying in deliberation?
Yeah, yeah. Are you any other? Question, can you deliberate?
Um. Well, I did just wanna thank Dean for kind of breaking down the dates and the logic and the remedy to. Get that clarified on the record.
So at this point, um, the board will recess at eight thirty seven, to the purpose of the elaborations, uh, you can back.
Okay, it's nine fifty two, the board is back from recess, and at this time. Um. I'll entertain a motion with regard to the first grievance presented by the union. Uh, regarding article two of the contract.
Mister Chair, I'm moved that the grievance is sustained, and so far as the administration has failed to provide notice to the union. Of hiring in the circumstances described in section two point two A, B, and C. And the administration is directed to provide such notice prospectively. To the extent the union claims the contract was violated by using non-union employees to perform bargaining unit work, the grievance is denied.
Do you have a second?
I'll take it.
Second. Um, any discussion?
Um. And I'd like to say that I'm, I'm going to vote, I'm going to abstain in this vote. Uh, because I, while I agree with the, um. The finding, so to speak, I. Feel there's more that could be done with a remedy. And I look forward to future conversations on the matter.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Dean is opposed. Abstentions.
Um.
Ian abstains.
Well, I'm going to abstain too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug. I, I didn't, uh, they didn't catch that, so that is also abstaining. Um, with regard to the second grievance presented by the union, uh, on article nineteen. Uh, the board will continue to deliberate. Um, at a future date and take vote at that time.
I wasn't on the microphone, sorry.
Second by Matt. Uh, all of them?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.